Computer says four thirty. Roll call.
Commissioner Bailey.
Here.
Commissioner Bunting.
Here.
Commissioner Gay.
Peter.
Commissioner Sapsy.
Here.
Commissioner Owens.
Here. You join us for the pledge of allegiance?
We want to pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and its republic, which it stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
George, can you get you to pray for us?
All bow your heads, please. Our most gracious heavenly father, we just thank you the day, for the day that you've given to us and the blessings in it. We ask father to, that you would continue to bless our servicemen and women overseas and at home for their safety. Also, father, our first responders, you'd bless them and keep them close to your heart. I ask father that also that this harvest seizing now and that would be bountiful and be pleasing to the folks that are farmers that they could have a great crop. I also want to have a special thought for the Charlie Kirk family and their devastated murder of Charlie Kirk. And we will hopefully get to the bottom of that and get some resolution. Pass all these things, your son's precious name, amen.
Any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yes, I'd like to, if the board would indulge, have a discussion about the recruitment of the finance director, new business, be the last item.
Anyone else?
Move the agenda as presented. Support.
Moved by George, supported by Tim to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Public comment? Okay. Need to consideration, consideration to commence the public hearing. Should we have a motion on?
Motion to. Support movement of the public hearing.
Motion by George, supported by Tim, to go into a public hearing regarding the adoption of our budget. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
O's nay? Put that out.
Yeah, I do have some questions on the budget.
We're gonna start out with just a brief.
I answered it.
I think it's to the right.
Okay.
Just a brief.
Just giving us a brief overview of how we got to this point with the budget. Tonight, we're asking you to consider the budget resolution, which is on page five through eight of your budget book that was prepared, this book. And that budget resolution is going to show compliance with public act six twenty-one of nineteen seventy-eight that requires us to adopt a budget. It's also going to approve the appropriations, which means what you're able to spend with the general and special revenue funds. The budget also, and that resolution approves the budget for all the funds, and that summarized on page nine and ten of the budget book. This resolution is also going to set the millage rates for twenty twenty-five, twenty-six tax year. It's going to prove the staffing levels that are on page nineteen through twenty of the book. And it authorizes various grants and reimbursements from the state to be signed and executed. And the last thing that budget resolution does is it approves the twenty twenty-five through twenty thirty capital improvement plan. General fund, we've talked about that the last two meetings. It's basically a status quo budget. It's proposing to use a million dollars of your assigned fund balance to make a MERS contribution. The unassigned fund balance is going to actually increase by two hundred ninety-five thousand dollars. And at the end of the year, we're estimating that the fund balance will be four million dollars in unassigned. One point five million in assigned for building renovations. We talked about this last time, four point five million dollars assigned for future budgets. And then lastly, there's one point five, a hundred, hundred and fifty thousand dollars roughly of grant money. You have to set that aside in whatever the grant is, so that's a reserve. Some of the other funds, I just picked out the ones that had the most changes to them, and that would be central dispatch. We talked about the addition of two dispatchers. Economic development agriculture millage, reducing that by point zero five, still providing for all of MSU's requests. And reducing greater grasshopper by fifty-eight thousand dollars due to the balance that they have on hand of greater grasshopper development. Commission on Aging recommending reducing the millage by point one. They'll be using five hundred thousand dollars of their fund balance, but the remaining fund balance is more than sufficient to provide for services to the seniors in future years. The capital budget in total has seven point six million dollars in it. That does not include anything for jail renovations because you're studying that. We'll have to put that in there when we know firm numbers for that. And then in twenty-five, twenty-six of that plan, the two point one million dollars has been rolled into your operating budget. Some major projects in the twenty twenty-six to twenty thirty plan, our sheriff vehicles incremental every year to replace them on one point four million dollars for five years. Central dispatch has three point three million dollars worth of technology. That's more than what their millage can provide. So we'll need to look for prioritizing those or looking for additional funding. Then we have the airport, it's taxiway, not tea hangers. They still left it in there on. The taxiway improvements of three hundred ninety-one thousand dollars, most of it federal and state, with the local contribution being eleven thousand four forty. And then, as I indicated, the jail renovations will need to be studied and then a possible bond. That's what's included in your budget that we're asking you to approve tonight in the public hearing. That's, the public can comment if they have any comments. Any questions on the budget?
Yeah, I do have questions on the budget. Okay, just getting myself a little organized for, I've been making notes. Okay, on the policy, which would be starting page five, I have a question on page three. And. Okay, I would like to, page eight, or I mean, yeah, page eight, you have twenty and twenty-one. And eleven that I have questions on, and then also you don't have twenty-two at all on.
There's no twenty-two, yeah.
You know, was there some reason why there's not?
So number, now be a further result, number twenty-three should be number twenty-two, so there isn't a twenty.
So twenty-three should be twenty-two.
Mm-hmm.
That was one of my questions, and then another question.
I didn't get that.
And then another question I had on that was. Is there any other, of the policies that we have there, is there any other policies out there, or this is all the policies?
Under number twenty, where it says that the grasshopper county policy manual shall apply to all employees?
Yeah.
That's just by referencing that this policy, but all the policies are not in this budget document.
It's not? Okay, because it does say in here that, that everybody, every elected official and everybody that's in the courthouse has to follow all of the policies.
Mm-hmm.
I was concerned that, and throughout the years here, we have new commissioners on the board such as Dave and Tim and Steve. Have they seen all of the policies that's out there? So I'd like to maybe table this, so we can have a special meeting where we can go through all the policies.
We, you can't table the budget, it has to be, well, you can table the budget, it has to be adopted by September thirtieth, so we'd have to enter a special meeting. But as far as getting the county policy manual, I know the majority of the policies are on the website. So that, if you did, as an aggregate, I don't know that there's a book with the county, all the policies in it, but I know they're on the websites.
Okay, well, let me.
There isn't a book anymore. There once upon a time was a book, but. But the book is in your office, right? Because it's not, apparently at one time, there used to be one that was like in every department, but that's because of, they put everything up online now.
Yeah, well, if you made a change.
Because I learned when I.
I've ever read his book.
It used to be one in every department. Now there's not.
Well, the thing, okay, well, another thing too, all elected officials, that does not include county commissioners. That only includes people in the county that work under the courthouse here. As county commissioners, we work for the public, we oversee what's going on at the courthouse or the, you know, the different departments. That's what our job would be, so that would only be elected officials that work under the, well, from the county that. So I didn't know if that needed to be more clarified on that part of it. But also, I'm just realizing this last week, that we have a commissioner that sits here that went to Chris to give him his, when he first came on the board, he said, this is my email address. And yet he doesn't get anything from the county on that email address. And apparently, I found out that he has an email through the county that he didn't even know he had.
What's my head?
You didn't know? Do you have the one, do you know?
I, I use just one email, my email.
Yeah.
They wanted me to have a separate one.
Yeah, they wanted me to have one too, but I said, no, I'm not on there. I don't have one at all through the county, but I was.
You have one.
Huh?
You have one?
No, I didn't. I looked it up. It's not on there.
Jay Bunting, Aggression MI.
Yeah, no, I don't have one. It's not on there. Looked it up, I looked it up yesterday, and it's not on there. I have nothing on there at all for me, and Tim, you did. And that's why I looked it up, because you said that you would give a official email, your personal email.
Yeah, yeah. What's up, Jan? It's just, you probably, it comes up, it's, it's just kind of generated, but anyhow.
Okay, I did. I looked it on and.
It's just not listed, maybe, but it comes up when you click.
Mr. Chairman, what has it got to do with the budget? I was just gonna say, like you were, this doesn't really.
I'm talking about, well, basically, I'm talking about the policy, and I don't know, I would not even think about going online to look at all the policies. I just wonder, this is saying in here, this is all the policies that everybody in the courthouse has to follow. Also, I realized that as a commissioner, I have found throughout the years that, well, there's been a lot of incidents, I don't go through that right now, but commissioners are not involved in any of your policies in the county. We're, we're county commissioners that oversee the county, we're the people that vote us in. And so, that was my other question. I have a couple more here.
They're more relevant.
Well, you know, don't even say that to me. I've said many times, we should have a workshop where we talk about these things. So you wait till the last minute, and then we need to vote on it.
Yeah, and there's your email right there for the county.
Okay, I'm just saying, I looked on there and I didn't say that.
Well, don't. It's there.
Okay.
I'm gonna say.
Very much. Never got, well, because I don't even have it hooked up to my phone, I would never get anything, right? I've been here twenty-five years. I've never received anything, so, I mean, that's, apparently it's something important, otherwise I probably would know what it is. So many years ago, I said, I only want one, I, I have enough, just what I get on my own phone. I don't need to add another email someplace where I gotta look it up. But anyway, just continue on. No, I would have rather had a workshop. We, I did go in and talk with Mr. Wood. I spent a afternoon and went over the that much questions that I had, but then when I got the new paperwork for our meeting today, there was a lot of new things on there, but I didn't get a chance to write a question on it, so that's what I'm doing now. And don't know what else to tell you. So anyway, let's continue on. I've got a few more here. I wanted to talk about permits. Another thing too, is that I've asked for permit, a list of permits that, it used to be, we got it at the end of the year, actually during the meetings. We used to get a report on a lot of different things, which I wrote down. It used to be permits, the checks, credit cards, and policies. That all used to be, that was in your paperwork wherever our meetings every month, and we no longer get a lot of this stuff. So I was suggesting, I also talked to Commissioner Shapsy about maybe once a month, and we can change every month. But maybe he can go over the checks, the check numbers and the checks, because that's what we're supposed to do. And one can go over the credit cards, and one can go over the policies, and every month we can switch and somebody can take something different. And we could, it has to be two people, so we could, one month it could be me and Tim, and the next month it can, and Steve and and Dave and George and Steve, and then the next month we can switch again, and this way it's getting covered that we're doing our job. So that's just a suggestion right now. Okay, I'm continuing on here, just a minute. Okay, another one was. Oh, how many more wind turbines will we be putting up from here point on?
Except right now, no, no, but there, there are exploring options in the northern part of the county for more.
Okay, well, there is three going up right now. I've taken a picture of them, and I have listed four hundred and seventeen wind turbines. Who owns them, their number, their address, and.
Where are these, where are these located, Jan?
These are going up at Hamilton, Hamilton Township.
They're being repaired.
No, 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 I, these numbers are not on my list. I have four hundred and seventeen, you said, I have all four hundred and seventeen wind turbines. I have their number, their address, the street or the road, who owns them. And these are brand new ones, and I, there's no big deal about it, except that we.
There's, there's the sheriff right there. He lives in Hamilton, and he could tell you.
Yeah, they're, they're being repaired.
Oh, I'm telling you, I, well, so we got.
Can't answer.
We have eighteen, nineteen, we have four hundred nineteen, or four hundred and twenty now. But I'm sure, but that's the reason I'm asking to look at the permits. I'm telling you, my permits is, there's no two, two numbers. I mean, there's some that have two on their property, but no, I'm just asking. There is more going on in the long term. I'd be glad to give you the address if you want. So, actually, it's on Pierce Road, and starts with a ransom. Yeah.
It's being repaired, being repaired. They're replacing the, the blades and the cell or where on that top portion.
Okay, I still have, I still have four hundred and twenty different addresses, so, and different people that own them, so. I'll let you look at, well, again, if I have a list of the permits, I can double do that, or I can look and cross-check on it. So, and they want to charge me to get this list, and they cannot charge me, and I'm dealing with an attorney right now, asking them. So I will be asking for it again. I want a copy of the permits from the wind turbines, or just give me the whole thing. You don't have to sort through that. Put it on a thumb drive, and it doesn't take sixty-three hours to do that, Sheila. If it does, then you're on the wrong job. But it doesn't take that long. Just put a flash drive in there and just copy them all, and then I can sort through them myself. But anyway, I'll get with you next week on that. And then, let's see here, a copy of the grand. Okay, I hit, oh. If you, if you have, do you have any questions, Steve? If you do, I could look for other questions, right?
I know. I got everything. I talked to Brian the other day, and we got things cleared up, but the question I had was, I had some questions and concerns, just so everybody knows, on the FTE stuff, and I know that you guys tried to work on that. I don't know if you'd had a chance to talk with the sheriff yet, Brian, on that whole thing.
Uh, I've been with the lieutenant.
Okay, that was the things that I had some questions on was, was on the FTEs of. The, the main one for me, because I did the math on, from what it showed on here and what I remember there being at the sheriff's office, and it didn't line up. And it, it was one off from what I had.
This is the authorization of current staffing. That's what this reflects.
Okay.
Now, you were talking about when you were.
Yeah.
This is the positions that are listed are accounted for in this budget. You've saved that, they're gonna have to come back, adjust the budget.
Okay.
It's, I mean.
So you're, if you were fully staffed, Tom, you would have, you have four shifts, right?
Yes.
Two days, two nights, five, 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 and four. And one assigned to the drug team. That's twenty. This adds up to be nineteen, doesn't it?
You.
It reads on here. Thirteen, four, two.
It's on the next page for secondary road patrol.
Yeah, because there's thirteen, four, and two. That adds up to be nineteen. But to be fully staffed, you have twenty, count the guy on the dope team. So that's where the discrepancy comes in. I know we don't have twenty working right now. I know that that's not.
It, it, it doesn't mean you can't. I'm just saying that this represents the current funding, the budget is built on.
Right.
What's on that paper.
Just so you know, if you're looking for four, you're really only going to find three, because that's the way. I just wanted to be clear, that's what I, my concern and question was. You cleared up the other stuff perfectly with oh, and how the half positions are paid for with the jail sergeant and the correct, or the.
Bailiffs.
Court bailiffs, yeah. That, that was all cleared up, but those were the questions I had, on those kind of things.
We made our best effort to account for the staff that was present, then.
Mm-hmm.
That's what the budget is built.
Yes.
Okay, I just have maybe one more question. This has to do with Sheila, since you're here. Do you have a grant or a contract grant or a grant contract with the ones for the recycling? Okay, we also need, we also need a, it's called a contract, a grant contract, signed by the governor, saying that she's approved this. And then also each one of your counties that are going to be a part of it, that has to be approved and signed by the administrator and by the chairperson, that they're in on this too. Okay, and then have you had any meetings lately?
Last month.
Every month? Okay, would you like to have a copy of the, I'd like to have a copy, or all of us would like to have a copy, of the minutes, the last, say, the last four months that you've had a meeting? Okay, thank you. And when is your next meeting?
I may not know.
This, this Friday?
Yeah.
Okay, and what we need to do, I think, too, is probably should have a commissioner on your board.
That is not allowed.
You mean, it's not allowed?
I, I don't think that this is the, the meeting to have that. There is a representative, the board of commissioners is the CAA. You have designated TPA, which is the person that is out there, and we are, get an elected official, but we have Mr. Bruce Cigisama. And the business that provide, that produces police, which is the conservation district. Those are the representatives from Ratchet County. There's not space for a commissioner, certainly it's not with a meeting, and you can be at any of that, which you would not be able to be a voting member based on how.
Oh, I don't think, I don't think they need, I don't think a commissioner cares about the voting member, but in order to get money, you have to go through the commissioner to cut out. So you should really have a commissioner sit on your board. It just helps it to go a little quicker.
You are already designated CAA.
Designated who?
You are already designated as the CAA. You did that, well, it ain't too hard.
I'm not sure. I guess we'll have to check on that. But, no, I'm just saying, if you want money, and also you've got to have an outline, which you're going to spend that money for too.
That is the work program that's just for the state.
Okay, that would be good. Anyway, just probably at the next meeting, you can bring that to us.
You've actually seen the work program that was provided previously, my last presentation about the MVP.
We, did we get a copy of that?
Absolutely did.
Okay, I'll go back here, my goodness, I didn't get that, but our last meeting.
I did, my last presentation about the MVP included the work program.
And you gave us each a paper on it. We hadn't had that in paper.
Would have been the part book. It was presented too.
Okay, I will look.
It was in our.
Okay, I will look. Thank you, Dylan. I'm done. Is anybody else having questions?
I guess, I don't want to beat a dead horse here with you, Ryan, because I know that you're sick of going on Easter egg hunts for things that aren't probably the way. I know, the way I hope that eventually this kind of gets to the drum a little plainer and clearer, but anyhow. So you guys have gone through with the FTEs. And this is, this reflects the number of people that each department had things they have, those they have, and the number of paychecks that we write.
Correct.
Every two day, every.
That's what it's based on.
Okay, that's what it's based off of, okay.
Yeah.
Because that's the, the thing that, I just want to make sure that our total FTEs is a hundred sixty-seven point zero five. We just, we got that, that's what we're counting for. So.
There's no other way to do a budget.
Yeah, well, I did, I wanted to be sure, because I was.
Especially coming through the door. I mean, we talked about different levels and different ones in time. This is the church of here and now, this is the budget. It's going to exceed the staffing levels that are here in any given department. It's going to have to come back. The budget will have to be adjusted, you know, that's what's authorized. That's what the resolution authorizes those positions.
Okay, I do have one more question, or maybe it's a statement that I need to talk about. Next year, they are going to put on the ballot this, how do you pronounce that? It's that whether we want to take and eliminate personal property tax.
Oh, exa-tax.
Exa-tax, yeah, I can never think of that. Exa-tax, that's gonna be.
Be on the budget, or is it for sure gonna be there?
Not for sure, but there.
Oh, they're, that's, I see the signs, they're petitioning.
They have until August to get this around, right? Andy, would you know that? I'm, I'm even better down. Yeah, the thing is this, if that gets on the ballot and it's voted one way or the other. And if it doesn't get on the ballot, then who makes that decision? Our governor?
Well, it doesn't make it on the budget. If it doesn't make it on the ballot, to my knowledge, it's a dead issue. If it makes it on there, it's vastly, our, our fate and the way we do things now is vastly weighs on how that, if it passes, things are going to change dramatically. If it's going down.
It's not their first trial.
No, this is.
I mean, winter, but.
Yeah, this has been multiple times. Third attempt, right? It's the thing they talked about when we were in April down in the, at the county meeting, and they were very adamant about how it would affect the county governments as we know them.
County, cities, villages.
Yeah, it's, it's everything.
Everything.
Everything, eyes on tax farming. With that's a change.
At the end of the month, Tim and I and Steve are going to the conference up in Traverse City, and I'm sure there, there'll, there'll be a huge, huge discussion on it. But anyway, that was one other point, is that we need to work cautiously from here on through until this fight out what's going on. It's my understanding that they have a good chance that it's going to go through this time. I don't know how anybody knows that, but anyway, I'm just hoping it doesn't.
Depends on how you listen to.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, now I'm done.
I'm just.
You're not very polite.
Yeah.
What is this meeting for, if we can't ask questions?
It's a question that you're supposed to be on the budget.
It is on the budget. All the stuff I've talked about is all re-refined around budget.
In a roundabout way, yeah. Any, any more questions? Public, have any comments?
Indeed. It does appear there is one missing on our road patrol. Should have fourteen on this, two under our, sorry, secondary or on, so we got, what I'm listing, one. If I, if I'm looking, if I'm reading your FTE, page right, I just pulled up on my phone, it does appear there is one missing.
So you have thirteen and then?
Should have a fourteen.
Should be fourteen.
Should be fourteen.
Well, you have then four for the.
Four, and two hundred secondary.
This is what came from, what was produced from the payroll department. Who, who's getting paychecks right now?
It should be, I understand, there's, there's three of us.
And that's why, that's what this is reflected, it's where you currently are and not maybe, is this where we're really are this, or we're going to fund it?
This is where you currently are, and what we are actually going to refund it.
Well, I said we wanted should be fourteen.
You want to have five, 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 and four.
Correct, because we have one on magnet.
And the one on magnet, you have to have fourteen.
Yeah.
With the four from Ithaca and the two from the state. That's how you're going to get to that.
You're not right now, but you are expecting to be. You're not right now, but you are expecting to be.
We could change the staffing, the FTEs on here to be thirteen, so you're authorized for it. I don't think you're going to need a budget amendment right now to add that extra officer in there because you have some vacancies. And we're going to be amended the budget every quarter, so we could do that with your first budget amendment in January. If you're fully staffed in that, in this next upcoming quarter, we could add those wages to it. But right now, there should be enough savings from vacancies to cover. But if you, if you want to have the authorization for that meeting, then it needs to go in there.
Suggests that they adjust. They rest charges. I'm the only person that you do that to. Just, you know. Against you and others. I'm tired of hearing of, but you guys.
And we're much shorter.
Are you going to sort it out? All right with that, Steve?
There's one more person on there.
You're proposing to increase the road patrol number to fourteen, but we won't add any money to the budget because we're going to have enough from savings and we'll do it the first quarterly adjustment.
I just think that if that's what he fully expects to be fully staffed, five, 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 four, and one on the dope team. And then you, that it should reflect. It'd reflect thirteen. If that's what he wants, I mean.
And we'll need to.
Can that be something that we can amend and still.
It's a budget.
Through this. Okay.
Do it in January, and I recommend doing that too, because you have the Ithaca contract that has to be associated too, so.
Yes.
Might have to change.
Be changing anyway. Just want to make sure it's, at the end of the day, I want to make sure that's my. I just want. We can amend it, motion. Reflect the change.
With the addition, with the addition of one road patrol.
Do that after the hearing closes. Yeah.
Does the public have any comment on the budget? Need a motion to close the hearing.
Consideration to adjourn the public. Oh, you, I moved it.
Move by George, by Steve to adjourn the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ooh, nay.
Tim approved it though, or seconded it?
He seconded.
I seconded it. He seconded.
He seconded.
It's for the.
Hey. The motion to adopt the resolution. Adopt amendments, pardon me.
Have amendments to do first.
Everybody.
I got one in my head, sorry. Consideration to approve the budget amendments, resolution twenty five dash three forty one. That's a record roll call.
Three forty one or three forty two?
Thirty one.
Forty one is the men, the budget amendments of last year's budget.
The current budget, yes.
There you go.
I saw a move that we approved the amendments to or approved resolution two five dash three four one for the amendments for the current budget.
The thirty four, twenty five. I, I support that.
Moved by Steve, supported by George to approve amendment to, or budget amendment, resolution twenty five dash three four one. It's a record roll call.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes.
Commissioner Sapsy.
Yes.
Commissioner Owens.
Yes. That's approved. Now, consideration to approve the twenty five, twenty six county budget as amended with resolution twenty five, three forty two. Again, that's a record roll call.
You want to add with one patrol and changing number twenty three to number twenty two on the resolution.
Yeah, that, we have to get that changed, right? Twenty three, it should be twenty two. Molly, is this the time to make that? Fourteen, folks. I saw a move that we approve resolution two five dash three four two with the amendments from page, I guess it would be fourth page. And now it be further resolved would read number twenty two instead of twenty three. And on the FTE page, the sheriff's general patrol, or I think it's under general budget, should be, the number should be fourteen.
And I want to make a correction too. On page eight, the resolution twenty. The policy here is only for the people of the, in the county. It's not the county commissioners. We're not included. And we oversee it, that they, that things are done, but we're not included as that the policy. I don't know what it would be in the policy that we'd have to worry about, but just the way it's worded, it should be worded differently.
Reads all employees, the county.
Yeah, all employees of the county.
County commissioners are considered employees.
And we're elected officials.
So is the sheriff. It shows.
So are we.
We don't, we don't get the benefits that you guys get. We don't get insurance or holiday pay.
Paycheck here. Molly, when you're going to give it to me too?
I called. Trying to think who I called today. They said, oh, I know, it was Roger Cook. I called Roger Cook. He said, we're county commissioners. We're not considered as part of the county employees. So I would like that pulled and we'll have it checked by attorneys. Why don't we do that?
Officials call employee with county commissioners.
Well, let's have it done by an attorney. Then we'll be sure.
Did you make a motion, Mr. Sapsy? Was it supported?
It was supported.
Moved by George, supported by George to consider the resolution twenty five dash three forty two. Again, this is a record roll call.
With the addition of adding fourteen to the road patrol on FTE page and the change of twenty three to twenty two on fourth page, right?
Thank you.
Well, now you're going to include my resolution on twenty, right?
You make a motion.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion. What, how do I make, you want me to make a motion that we make that change?
You have an amendment.
I, I want to do it on that. What I'd like to do is have it checked by an attorney that we can call. Our attorney on that.
So is this the time to do it, or should we have it checked by an attorney then making a, or? An amendment to that resolution. That's, I just want to make sure. I, I understand what you're saying, Jan, that about the commissioner thing. I get that, but is this the time if we, we got to prove this thing or have another meeting to approve this thing? And are we going to be able to get something back from the county's attorney in time to get this result? Or should we make this resolution, or should we do this amendment? We can always amend this. This resolution.
Okay.
Can be amended once we know for fact from an attorney.
I think we. Budget, but you can, you can come back.
And number twenty, because that's the one you're concerned about, correct?
Uh huh, yes, it is.
That's the one that I think after this meeting, you have Ryan or someone ask our county's attorney for clarification.
I called Roger Cook just before I came to the meeting and asked him about it.
Mm hmm.
Roger Cook was the administrator, the first administrator that the county ever had. And so I called him and he said, no, we're separate from the county. The commissioners are. So we can still go through an attorney and have a check, but I understand where we're coming from.
It would, that doesn't make sense at all to me. I mean, you need support for the motion, but I would just note. You're going to a conference with county dollars. You're going to adhere to the same policies that are set forth. If that did not apply, there would be no limit to your use of public fund. We have a cyber policy every employee uses. Sheriff, all elected officials, all staff that use access county computer system for cybersecurity purposes that all county commissioners need to sign if they're going to access that.
Yep.
Otherwise, you're opening yourself up to cyber risks and. Offs and, I mean, there's a number of policies that govern the county that if you have access to those materials, that need to be followed. And because you're an elected official, whether you're a county commissioner or sheriff, it doesn't matter. You need to adhere to protection of public resource, and that's what that, we can certainly ask an attorney, but it does not make any sense at all.
I don't have anything that belongs to the county. I do not have their phone or their iPads.
That's why you don't have this.
It's by your choice. Right? That's by your choice. We didn't, not, not keep.
I should have that right not to have that. I don't want, I don't want.
Well, you do have that.
Yeah, I did. I said.
You don't have it. That's why you don't have that.
Yeah.
I'm not getting your emails.
Well, thank you.
Again, you could use my personal email and email.
And that becomes a cyber issue. Your personal phone accessing the county computers.
What is, what is a secret of this county that we've, we would ask.
It's not that. It's Emmer's trying to get in into your account. And once they get into your account, if you click on something, it can go to everybody in this building if you do it wrong.
Anyway, that's not the place for that. We can, we can ask an attorney, but it just doesn't make sense.
So I want to get through this, and then if we have this concern, we get it cleared, we get it clarified by the county's attorney. We can always come back and amend this if we find out that that's exactly what it means to be.
These policies are in place.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We need these policies in place to move forward with the budget. And then if there's an amendment, we can always come back and amend it. Okay?
Okay, I'll make a deal with you. If you sign the contract, then I'll sign it. But you didn't want to sign it either. Remember, you told me.
Well, cell phone stuff, I didn't, I don't have one. I've never had county cell.
I don't either. I don't either. What, what they're telling me is if they send me something and I open it up and someone, and I get hacked, then it goes into all of their stuff.
If you have your own phone, no, but you, you can. By sending that back to someone in the county, it'll go back that way.
That's what I'm just.
Melware. It's malware.
I, I use my county email all the time. I use it all the time on this. Like, that's, I pull up my board.
But you didn't sign that contract, did you? You said you were gonna.
I don't know whether, what I, when I got this, I signed for this.
Yes, you signed.
You signed the contract.
Must have signed.
Signed for that, you signed for the contract.
Okay, I did sign to get this.
You, you signed up.
I got the sticky note. It said, Smith to Sapsy. Sucking my cover.
Can we have a motion now?
Thank you. It's a motion. That's right.
I have a question with a second to approve the resolution for, or twenty five, three forty two. With adding the fourteen road patrol to the FTE and changing twenty three to twenty two. And we do have a second on that.
Sure.
So we need to do a roll call, and then we have a motion on the floor to amend the motion on the floor to take off number twenty off the resolution, but we don't have a second on that. Jan made a motion.
What's twenty? Missed something.
Something to do about.
She wanted to remove that policy issue with the, related to the commission. That was her amendment. It was not supported.
So we're going to remove it?
No, there's no, there's no.
Second to be amended.
Oh, okay.
Because, as I said. Jan understands that we're going to have an attorney check that out, and if it needs to be amended, it can be amended at a later date.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, we're all on the same page?
So that one, yeah, we're all on the same page now. Who, who was the support on that one anyways? I made it.
I did.
George did.
Yeah.
Did the first, did the one for.
And then Bailey, yes.
One more.
Oh, call.
Three forty two. Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes.
Commissioner Sapsy.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Owens.
Yes. Okay, adopted the budget.
Thank you, Brian.
Consideration to adopt the fee schedule, sign resolution twenty five dash three four zero. Your pleasure?
I'm, I'm new to, can we discuss it now or do we need a motion first? How do we come up with all these anyhow?
Fees?
Yeah, fees.
You got, you got a lot of time? It takes, it, it's evolved over many, 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 many years.
I looked up some of like our previous ones and some like, do we use comparables or, you, you know, I mean, that's.
We have, we have, yes, and ask, yes. If we have changed and went, and brought our fee schedule up, we found out other, other units of government.
On that.
And more.
As I say, because you know, you, you notice which ones are up this year, so that's just curious as to how we.
And we try to keep a balance. Somebody's been a policy to keep a balance, but if, if we have a department that, that creates fees and they would, they would normally come to the administrator and express their concern, and through the administrator, they would come to us and, and we would say yes or no, but that's how it's done normally. And I didn't, we didn't see any, we didn't see fees changed this year, so.
So you sent a request to the departments asking if they would review their fees and make any requests to Ryan and I to change them, and these are the departments who did request. Let me give you a background on best practices for setting fees is fees to pay more than above your taxes. So you need to balance of the service that's being provided. How much does it cost? How much should the individual pay for that versus how much should the tax dollars pay for that? And then also you need to look at what your neighboring communities are doing too, so you're keeping them in line.
Good.
You look at what the cost to provide those services, and then how are you going to have that paid for by a fee or by taxes?
It's just interesting to see, you know.
And that being a part of the history, I understand it's a building ones. There was a few years ago, set up to be a three-year increase. This was a plan that's been in place. It's going to incrementally change.
Incrementally.
Yeah.
And this is year two of that?
It's year three.
This is the final.
Final year.
So next year, they'll have to probably study and see if.
Right.
Do something similar.
It's driven by the building code. Do they set ranges for a base?
For all that.
So the ones that are highlighted are the ones that have gone up.
I love the fact you got to pay a fee to get an address.
You have to do address.
Glad I built mine before that started. That would have been the, the power company signing it back when I built mine, so.
It triggers quite a bit of activity.
Yeah, it's just, it's interesting to see how that whole, I mean, air to the drain commission or to the building, it's, it's just interesting. It's just interesting that so. And some of them are quite a bit of money. You start getting into some of these larger projects, like.
I hear motion to adopt the, the fee schedule.
Well, support.
Moved by George, supported by Tim to adopt resolution twenty five dash three four zero. This will be a record roll call.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes.
Commissioner Sapsy.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Owens.
Yes. Resolution was adopted. The added discussion on the finance position. Oh, pardon me. Consideration to do the consent calendar.
I saw a move to approve the consent calendar that's presented last minutes.
I would support that, but I'd like to bring attention that what's in the consent calendar is our tire pickup for the twentieth of September. So just remind everybody that the tire pickup in Elma on the twentieth of September.
September twentieth.
Of course, if you have tires, call cell conservation, get yourself an appointment and bring your tires.
Money to the conservation district.
That's it.
That's all I got to say.
We're the meetings.
Yeah.
Had to get my plug in.
There you go. Moved by Steve, supported by Tim.
Moved by George, supported by me. Moved by George, supported by me for that one, right? No, I did move.
Get it?
Got it backwards. Sorry, guys.
Right.
Yes, my bad. I got reading about tires and got.
You gotta you gotta you gotta trust the chairman. He's doing all right.
There you go.
You got a motion to consider the consent calendar. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
What was name?
I got that next step.
Oh, we got administrator's report.
Yes, quickly, I would note that. It came to our attention that the Michigan appellate council system. Is referred to as M A A C S has historically has been a recent years bank for some of the appellate appellate. Legal services that the county's been responsible for. We have signed up in that system. We should be receiving some reimbursement for some of the appellate costs that the circuit court has been or the court system has been responsible for paying. So there'll be a small revenue strain. It's not a huge issue, but that has been ongoing and. We are jumping in that system and going to get our share of the pie that the state has made that we deserve.
Will be any more.
I would note a base talking about contractors and permits and such that the that will be hosting a. Contendering professional education session for local licensed contractors, October second. Um, this past a couple of weeks, emergency planning. Meeting at the Greta Isabella R E S D. That was an interesting discussion and also attended the. Most recent meeting of the central dispatch board. And I would further note that. The applications for the position of county administrator closes next Monday, this coming Monday. And we I know that there's been some interest in the job and I've had a couple of contacts and one person interested possibly in. Applying. Visited the county last Friday and I spent some time talking with him about the job and tried to encourage him to consider applying. So you know, there's the word's out there and it's getting around and there's some. Some discussion amongst folks that might be interested in the position. So with that, I conclude.
Okay, George?
Uh, yes, uh, I had two, uh, went to two meetings and the gotta go back to the date now. My phone got. Okay, gotcha. All right, the eighth. I went to Hamilton Township and then I went to North Star Township. Uh, Hamilton Township has just got their lawn all fixed and seeded by now. Grass is probably growing.
Yes.
They did it while Tom was gone, so they didn't have to have any problems. Oh, uh, and then uh. The normal course of business there. Uh, it's just nice to see the hall coming along and they're making quite strides decorating it up, getting it all ready to go. Um, and then I went to North Star. We talked about the blight situation in North Star. It seems that's all we do is talk about the blight situation in North Star. And it's just like a circle, what I call a circular firing squad. It's just, we don't get anywhere. We'll keep them. We'll keep. We'll keep working at it. And then, of course, I I my brother in law passed away last week, so I was out a couple of meetings and so. Uh, it's today and I leave for England tomorrow morning and I'll be back on the sixth. So I'll be back the first meeting of the month. So I don't miss meetings like somebody else does.
Yeah, safe travels. Tim?
Uh, on September eighth, I went to the Emerson Township meeting. The chair and the treasurer were absent. Like three people there. They sit at a rectangular table. They do pay the bills right there.
That's not unusual.
Um, it lasted about twenty minutes.
Yeah.
Uh, there's a man there all the time that he takes care of both cemeteries. There's two cemeteries in Emerson.
Bob Icarus.
No, no, Bob resigned.
What he did?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, he's eighty three years old.
So?
He does. He does work.
Yeah.
But this is a young.
Okay, okay, good.
Um, September eleventh, I went to a mental health meeting. And their physical year also ends September thirtieth, so they talk about finances. Uh, September twelfth, I talked to Ryan about government and. Local county government and discussed the budget for. The two twenty twenty five, twenty six year. September thirteenth, I had a talk with Jan over the phone while I was walking my foster dog.
Thank you. Steve, what do you got?
Um. On Thursday, the fourth, I attended the German luncheon that we had down at the R E S D. It was nice to get to meet them and and spend some time. That was the only thing that I had time to attend. On Monday, the eighth, um, I have had three meetings that all started at seven o'clock. I started out at New Haven. They adjusted their agenda. Let me go first. From there, I went to Newark from Newark, uh, down to Parenton. So you don't spend much time at any one of those when you're trying to get the three of them before they're all done. So and that that system works going that way. If Newark has anything at all on their agenda, I can usually get done at New Haven. Make it down Buchanan or Odellger and get in there and say something. They had a few things on their agenda, so I was actually able to. I I they weren't holding it up for me. Um, and then the tenth, I filled in for George with our union negotiations. And then Monday, the fifteenth, last night, I went over to North Shade. Um, to their meeting and blight is an issue that comes up. Everybody who's involved in it is not happy with it. I've talked with Ryan about, you know, that that we've actually discussed. There's money in the budget to hopefully we can revamp it. Um, because you've got a lot of people who are very disgruntled. They paid their money towards it. There's nothing getting done with it. And um, there's no updates that came since March on it.
Working on that.
I know you. I know you. And I tell them all that we've been working on this. I that's a broken record. I talk about it multiple times a month. But that this is, we have to get something done and I I really truly believe the county owes. The people, the all of these townships that have that have or municipalities that have took their uh tax dollars, their people's money into it. Something. Tell them what's going on. We are working on revamping it. We are whatever they need to know so that it's not on all of their agendas. And. You know, I I feel like I have nothing to say other than we're revamping it. We're revamping it. We're working on it. So that's, I mean.
It's not going to get fixed for a long.
Exactly. It's working on it.
Yeah, but it's, I think.
On my list.
I think it needs to go. The letter needs to go out and email to all those people that we were sending. Updates, 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 because they were feeling like they didn't know what was going on. Then they fast forwarded into feeling like they knew what was going on and then it's like nothing since then, other than when they asked. So anyhow. And something has to either give them their money back or something. I'm tired of your butt. Say that again. That's all my stuff. Then we're today, sixteenth.
And what do you have?
I've been to Bethany Township a couple of times. And I've been to the Alma City meeting. I also went to the R E S D luncheon for the prequel from Germany. And also went um, the next day to across from Pizza Sam to a restaurant where they all met, had a good time. And also went to the one just the night before they left. I went to Saint Louis. I don't know what the name of it was. Sports and bar over there, sports bar. I live in Saint Louis, but I don't get to the downtown there very often. But anyway, just busy. Um, I also made copies of the budget for each one of my districts. So I sent the one or took the one to Bethany the other night. And in case, I don't know if you guys are going to do it, Dave and Tim, I've already made a copy of our budget to give to them so you don't have to. I'll give that to them at the end of the month. Actually, I have a meeting with Eric this next week. And so when I see him, I'll give it to him then.
Well, that budget is online, right, Ann?
I know, but I give him a hand copy every time. I've done that.
In all the.
All the years.
Look at it. Tell them to publish.
Uh, you you know, when you tell them it's online, people don't have time to do that, but by giving them one, they they literally sit down and go through it. So I mean, I think that makes it nice. I've been doing that for years. So, okay, other than that, um, be quiet.
Well, I missed the last meeting because I was with the sheriff greeting the German delegation in Detroit. And uh.
It's no excuse.
That's all I got.
That's all he's got is excuses.
His Uber did pick us up.
Last week, uh, consumers finally hooked up the flashing lights at forty six in Warner. Been working on that for about a year and a half.
Uh huh.
And.
About twenty years overdue.
Some, yeah, sometimes consumers. Works at the speed of the second coming of the Lord, but anyway, we've got them, got them flashing now. And uh.
What township is that in?
Seville. And I got a meeting tonight at Pine River. And if I miss the meeting, it's no biggie because. Kevin Beeson has something that I should know. He calls me. So if I I miss the meeting, it's no biggie. So that's it for my recording. Okay, consideration for new business. Consideration to authorize to hire an assistant prosecutor. We got the prosecutor here to give us the word.
Need some assistance?
Hello, we are hiring to fill our staff, so it would be the fourth attorney position. Um, the assistant prosecutor spot that was previously held by Blake Byer, the young man that joined us for just over a year. Um, and so we have had some, as I said in my memo, some initial discussions with an individual. It's not uh certainty. He has to go through the formal process here. But I wanted at least to get authorization in order to make the move worthwhile for him. He's currently at another county's prosecutor office. Um, and uh, I would like the authority to be able to offer him at step three. Uh, I think current policy allows me as an elected official to uh offer at one step one or two without board approval. In this case, I would like to go one additional step up uh to compensate uh for his years of experience. That would be commensurate to where he is now, uh, and I would like that uh authority to do that if we do end up making this person an offer.
Ryan left.
No, Ryan is still here.
Blake.
Blake.
He's laughing.
The young, the young, the really young.
Really young guy.
He's back. He's back up in Grand Traverse County.
He did go back to.
Yeah.
I make a motion that we allow the prosecuting attorney to hire her uh extra or the fourth attorney at step three.
Sir. By George, supported by Steve to authorize the prosecuting attorney to hire a fourth assistant prosecutor attorney and pay him at step three on the scale. Should that be a roll call?
Yeah.
I think it's financial soul brother.
Commissioner Sapsy.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes.
Commissioner Owens.
Yes.
Thank you.
Should get that.
Next step, foreclosing governmental unit report. Carrie Ball.
Hello, I'm here tonight to present uh my annual statutorily required uh report. This is um, a foreclosing governmental unit report. And this is for foreclosure sale year twenty twenty three. It's required by the state that it comes to you and to them by September third.
Week here. It's twenty three.
I know. I don't know.
Can't keep up twenty twenty five.
That's the statutory requirement, so I'm here to present it to you tonight.
You just kind of go through their cursory so that commissioners can kind of understand what you're really doing here.
As far as the what these are on the stage, absolutely.
Like the forty one thousand, what does that mean? And and then one hundred ninety six thousand, what does that mean?
Um.
Just one of these columns.
Yep, absolutely. Um. Of course, the first one is the year. The second column is how many parcels um. Went up for foreclosure or and were not canceled or redeemed. That number was ten in the year.
That's how many?
Ten? Yes.
Twenty twenty three.
In twenty twenty three, that was the sale year twenty twenty three.
I think you did this.
Well, no, you can't.
Okay, and then the next column, column three is the sum of all the minimum bids. That's what when it went up, when they went up for sale, that was the sum of all the minimum bids of these ten properties. Okay, uh, properties sold to governmental agencies like townships or cities. Hold on. It looks like this, Fran.
Yeah, good. I almost see it as twenty twenty three on that. Right?
Right here, the left hand corner.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
Yeah, thanks.
Uh, next column is uh. Sum of minimum bids for all of those properties that were offered to governmental agencies under right of first refusal, also zero. And then the next column is total amount paid. And that's also zero because there were no properties that were sold to governmental agencies. Um, the next column, which is the yellow, um, the number of parcels sold at public auction, that was nine. Sum of minimum bids for properties. Forty thousand, that one, that that is that number. Okay, and then the next column, the third yellow column, the final yellow column, is um, the amounts that were paid for the properties sold at the auction. Okay. The next one, the next column in white is those are the penalties, interest, fees and costs. And then the next one is once again, the all of the the amount of properties that hold and governmental and private, same number. Proceeds paid to claimants for all properties, zero. Nobody filed for the notice of intent that year. And then the remaining proceeds is the. The last column that gives you what was left after all of the taxes, fees, interest, everything that was owed was paid.
Okay. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions on that?
Just going to ask you, but you cleared it up. The the penalties and stuff comes out of the the total amount, so that's how you gum up.
Yep.
Yep, okay.
Make a motion and we accept that report and put it on file.
Or. By George, supported by Steve to accept that report and put it on file. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Should carry.
Thank you.
This is where you want to talk about the.
That's where you put it, right?
We moved it up in front of the public. Our new M.
All right, um. Sorry, I'm just busting this out. Um. But nonetheless, um. A while ago, you authorized us to. Do a search for a financial director. We had discussions then. The range was set at one hundred to one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Uh, the interview team, as we discussed, uh, was myself, Mary Ann from the Wood Hill Group. And uh. Another controller administrator from a neighboring county. Was twenty five plus years of experience. Who has twenty five plus years of experience as well. We had, I think we had eleven applications. We elected to, we selected five for interviews. That was all scheduled. They all accepted and we had an interview schedule set up. And the morning of the interviews, the first set of interviews, one withdrew. I inquired why they withdrew. Their current employer found out that she was applying and gave her a raise. And she was pretty competitive with the schedule that we had offered and.
What it's offered, and it was a pretty good raise.
She was in the, she was within the range we offered, and they gave her a raise to it, and whatever. And anyways, it wasn't like she didn't want to, but getting. So we was left with four candidates, we went ahead and did those four interviews. At the conclusion, we didn't have much of any discussion, you know, as they came in. But at the conclusion, there was very strong currents on the candidate that would best fit and was capable of performing the duties of the financial director. I have followed up, had a conversation about the position. I think the individual has a good understanding of where the county is, how it's situated. Is, in fact, the mayor with the area, you know, best case scenario. So it's live in the area. Has the four-year degree required, accounting? And he has twenty five plus years of experience in the accounting world, leading organizations, as a financial officer. He has a certified public accounting certificate from Illinois. Isn't qualified as a certified public accountant because when you get that certificate, after you pass the exams, you need to work for a couple of years with a public audit firm and audit, like, to get your apprenticeship in. Never did that because I went just to work for organizations such as this, and that was just what followed either. Nonetheless, had discussions again with the, about the job. It's going to take a hundred and the top of the scale to, I think, him or her to agree to come to work here. There's still a couple of issues that need to be, you know, backgrounds and things and. But rather than wait until October seventh to come back, they're gonna require a thirty day notice to their employer. I'm asking for permission tonight to proceed and complete the hiring process at the top of the scale.
You're getting a background done and all that.
Yes, yes, that's one of the things just in the workshop.
They're getting all that. I'll make a motion that we would allow that our administrator allow to offer that position for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for that person. Second.
Moved by George, supported by Tim, to authorize the administrator to go ahead and offer it to man or woman for the hundred and twenty thousand dollars. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion aye, motion carried.
Thank you.
Well, he can't start till October seventh.
Well, once we get through the final checks, he'll notify his employer. Then I'll start the thirty day clock.
Oh, it'll be November.
Yeah, it'll probably be mid, late October, yeah, hopefully before November, but yeah. Okay. Which is what you expect once a working individual, it's.
Okay, consideration to go into the airport meeting.
Second. Or.
Moved by Tim, supported by George, to enter into the.
They're moving to the airport.
Yeah.
Okay, just did.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion aye, carried. Dennis? Or did you want to start off, George?
Yeah, oh, you want me to? Dennis can. Well, where I gotta flip over, just hold on. I'm, I'm behind the gun here. I got, I'm behind a whole bunch. I'm not listening and I'm listening and I'm not listening. I'm thinking about getting out of here is my problem. Okay, airport financials, follow us up. There's nothing that's that's unusual about them. Dennis will talk about how much fuel we sold. Still have a fund balance of one million, one hundred seventy eight thousand, nine hundred forty eight dollars, fifteen cents. We're holding our own. Uh, and we're, and we'll get into it in down further in the discussion about uh, our five-year plan and working on those things, and that will eventually affect our budget. But we'll we'll get that at a different point. All right, go ahead.
Okay, in the packet, there was financial information for the airport. In August, we purchased some more Jet A and a hundred low lead. Those bills, there's two outstanding bills right now that are fully paid shortly for that fuel. In both cases, we were down to minimum number of gallons in both cases, but that's good because that means we sold fuel. Uh, in that packet, there's, uh, there's information about fuel sales. On the Jet A side, we're like a hundred and four gallons below what we sold last year at the same time. Number wise, we're two transactions ahead. And the hundred low lead side, we're twenty one hundred gallons ahead compared to last year for the same time through August. And we're, we're up actually forty three transactions compared to the previous year. And that, again, is just comparing previous year. Weatherwise, we're still fourteen days through August where we didn't have any fuel sales. So kind of an indication, the weather's bad, we're not gonna have fuel sales.
Can't fly.
Can't fly.
Can buy fuel.
So the big, the big twenty four was in January. Get some improvements there, so we'll see how it ends up. Jet fuel sales probably won't be quite what it was last year for September, just because we've got a lot of dry weather. Uh, normally, there's quite a bit of seeding done with crop dusters. But if it's wet, wetter, there's more seeding, because they won't be able to get in the fields. So it's been really dry, so as crops are harvested, they can, they won't need to seed it from the air, they can actually do it themselves if time permits. Uh, but they're, and the tar spot spraying that was done in August wasn't as as bad as the previous years, the number of acres done, so. So fuel sales varies a little bit based on what's happening through that, through crop dusters and stuff, so. So I, I think I, I gave you a bunch of about six, seven pages of data on stuff for the airport through August. Mowing, we're all up to date on mowing. Um, they had some information in there from our fly-in, August twenty third. Uh, I think we had a hundred and ninety five people that had lunch with us. We had little kitty rides, little airplanes that we gave rides on, we had eighty eight kitty rides this year. We also, I think we had around twelve adult kitty rides. There was one there, there's some in the packet there. We also continue to bring up the brush and the stumps on Eli Highway there. Uh, we started out with like fifteen piles of stumps and trees. Uh, we're down to six right now, five or six right now, as we combine and continue to burn that, depending on what the weather does. Uh, we burned two piles in the week. So it's pretty dry, so we're gonna wait to see if we can get some more rain before we're back there. It's pretty dusty, too, as we work there. Oh, I don't know if there's any more questions, there's quite a bit of information in your packet.
I guess just on the the financial part of it. So we started the year out after giving the million dollars. We were up at, what was it, one million, two fifty seven, two forty four? And we're down to a million, thirty one thousand. Am I reading that right?
You said what? We're down to one million, one hundred seventy four thousand dollar. It's a fund balance. Look at the top of the page. Other than that.
Yeah.
It's the fund balance.
It just, I'm used to seeing it down here.
Well, it's been that way since for quite a while now.
Where do we start the year out at, we're ending this this year? I guess that's my question is.
Spending down fund balance because you're investing in the airport on different things. Everything we've done costs money.
I agree, I just, I'm looking at longevity, because if we're cooking through two hundred grand a year, five years from now, if we haven't brought in a different revenue source, well, the plan, that's pretty obvious what we're gonna have to do. But that's for another discussion, I suppose.
Dennis, do you think it's a little slower right now because of the economy? Does it pick up a little bit more later on?
I don't sense it's much different than previous year. Pilots have the tendency, they're gonna fly and buy fuel and stuff, they're gonna do that. They're, I mean, they're, I mean, with the weather situation, we haven't sold as much Jet A or as we normally would, but that's because of our spot and seeding and stuff. So, um, I mean, that can be, can go up and down too, depending on what's going on. We need some rain right now, obviously, for farmers and everything, so.
Some of the tar spot too, sales would be down because neighbor has a drone and he's been spraying a lot of fields.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there's other things happen there, yeah, with drones.
Do you think, do we advertise at all that we have the airport that does? I mean, our airport is very, it does, it does more than other airports do. Like you can fly in in four different directions, and it's also a bigger airport. Is that, do you think we should advertise a little bit to other airports that we have this?
Well, advertising is one of those things, how do you advertise? The local people, of course, fly in, do it, but we have a lot of people that fly in, get fuel from all different counties around.
Farmers are biggest draw. We have this, we have the most reasonable fuel prices around, right? And when you get in a plane, flying a hundred miles, nothing. All right, so we got a lot of people that fly in from Grand Rapids, Flint, Port Huron. They'll just go on, they need some fuel, they get up in the air and they go. And then, you know, small planes don't take a lot of fuel at a time. You know, anywhere from fifteen to fifty gallons, depending on the plane, that's all they take. Uh, it's not like a jet plane that hauls on three, four hundred gallons at a time. So it's a, it's a different animal, but.
Kind of nice if we had a mechanic. That'd be wonderful.
Well, anything on site, health, spring, mechanics and or avionics. I mean, we got people that are flying airplanes from our location or to other locations where they can get in. We just had a guy fly an airplane to Flint to have some avionics done on an airplane, but it took a year to get an appointment. So we've had some situations on avionics with the flight school. It's nine to ten months out, so we have to go with some other subcontractors that can do that work. So anything that can bring activity to the airport helps generate income, whether it's, you know, mechanic or avionics. There's a big need for avionics, has been for quite a while, so. But we've got to find the right person that would want to start a business at the airport.
And it's not like we're not looking and asking, it's just, it's just one of those areas that's very difficult. One of the things that we have done is completed our five-year plan. What the five-year plan is gonna be able to do is to get us into another different grant cycle that we can get a lot of these things that are expensive. Uh, taxiways, cold storage basement, runway lights, taxiway extensions, any of these things that, well, we can incorporate, get grants for, that will enhance the airport. And that's what we're working on right now, we just redo that five-year con, or, uh, plan, five-year plan. Um, with that, hopefully, we'll be able to grow the airport in federal dollars. And it'll take some time, but we'll get there.
Dennis, you did talk, I think we talked about it one time, about some kind of transportation from the airport into town.
You got it.
Did you do anything about that?
Yeah, we've, we've, one of the police.
We got a brown vic out there.
Yeah. Oh. It was used the day before yesterday, there's a guy running tomorrow, it's gonna use it, so.
That helps, I think.
One of the things you'd see down on the list of that five-year plan, but it was, we got a stump removal, okay? Tony's been working on this, it's kind of a specialty that we're trying to do at the end of, yeah, the northern approach to the airport across the road. We, last year, we eliminated a lot of trees. Now we got brush that we have to get out of there, all right? And the quote that we put on your desk today, Tony's been at, for quite a while now, trying to get different quotes. The only one, one that was come in was these fellows here. Uh, it's, it's a difficult job. Uh, if you go out there and take a look, it's gnarly. And all this is gonna do is it'll get all that out of the way. And then we can go in there and we can seed it to grass or hay, if you will. And so the farmer would have another area to cut, but you're cutting that, then the trees won't grow back up. That's the point. So we're trying to spend money in that way, so.
Some of this is the extension of the runway. In doing that, will that open us up to larger aircraft, is that the whole idea of it, or more commercials type stuff?
I think first on the list here was the taxiway extension. Right now, we have a taxiway that runs parallel to the east-west runway. But it only goes to the east to runway two seven. There's been, over the years, a lot of airport people would like that taxiway extended down to the, to the west to runway nine. It's a safety issue, because right now, if you have to take off into the east, into the wind, you have to back taxi on runway nine two seven and go down runway eighteen.
And that's a situation, because you're, you, somebody could come in while you're going out, you know.
So that was one, probably the first thing that we talked about in quite length at the advisory group about the five-year plan. And that may still be five or ten years out, okay? It isn't like you just put it on there and it happens, there's a lot of study work, even if you do an extension. One of the other things we talked about is extending the runway, we've had some in the last ten years, some companies call, wondering if we're gonna be doing an expansion on the runway. Length, we're at five thousand feet, which allows for small business jets, and some medium-sized business jets come in. But if you want to go to the next level of airplanes, you have to have probably six thousand feet, which is another thousand feet, which would have to be studied, but there's probably room on airport property to to the east. But again, that's nothing that will happen overnight. It could be a five or ten or longer project. Once you, once they study it and see if you can, you know, actually do it, so. But it's not bad to have it on the five or ten-year plan of what kind of expansion we would look at. As you go to a larger runway, which has heavier air. which has heavier airplanes, then you have to evaluate your present runway to see if it's got the correct load distribution for heavier airplanes. Um, there's some airports that, depending on where they're located, if you bring in bigger airplanes, you gotta have concrete places for them to park. The load is okay as they move, but once they park, you gotta be on thicker concrete or it will sink into the asphalt. So, um, and then some of this other stuff, we're scheduled for, uh, our taxiways are still scheduled yet this fall, but they may get, we're waiting for federal funding, uh, still hasn't opened up yet. It may get pushed to next spring. We already awarded the contract subject to federal funding. So as soon as the taxi lanes, uh, T hangars is our next project, it was supposed to be done this fall. Hopefully, October, uh, not any later than that. Uh, the next major project at the airport is, is our lighting for runway nine two seven. Um, that's, uh, the state of Michigan. It has said that should be one of our next major projects to improve the lighting. They're over twenty-some years old. Um, when we do that, we'll, um, that's scheduled to be like, uh, almost a million-dollar project, of which five percent will be local, the rest will be state and federal funds. Um, but at that time, we're looking at moving all the equipment in the old terminal that manages all those lights and stuff out to a separate building, which is the trend that has happened over the last five or ten years to move equipment into a prefab, concrete-type building, um, away from other buildings so that can be managed remotely without people being there or, um, they can come have access to it. So, um, runway lights would, would be the next one for nine two seven. And after that, be runway lights on eighteen three six. Our paving is in pretty good shape runway-wise. Uh, we score pretty good on paving. Quality of the pave, paving is good. Our ramp area has one area that is somewhat, uh, low on scoring. Uh, if you get below forty, then they say you should replace it, and that's where we're at on our taxiways uh, between the T hangars. I think they're rated at thirty-five or something like that. I'd have to go back and look. But they're the original taxiways fifty-five years ago, so you can understand the, you know, why they're rated so low. So other than that, um, we're always, uh, working on crack, crack ceiling. That's really not a capital item, but it's more of a maintenance item. Um, so taxiway extension was one thing, runway extension was another, lighting replacement. Um, we still have on here the terminal, um, you know, we applied for a grant for the terminals, some money for that. That was, uh, we were not approved, uh, for that. Most of the money for that that category went to, uh, uh, Grand Rapids and Detroit versus general aviation, even though it's general aviation funding. Um, we have one more opportunity. Last year, we had to have our grant request in for a new terminal by July thirty-first. As of this time, we haven't heard anything on that. So, um, uh, anticipate we'll probably get some kind of request in, I don't know, October, November. Then everything will be moved back, say approve any, um, new terminals in the state. Only two general aviation terminals have been approved in the state. Uh, so under that five-year infrastructure plan, so. So we hope we're still gonna apply. Uh, we have already, um, all the information. We just, uh, soon as we hear, we'll reapply for that. Um, and we've had on there for quite a number of years designing and, and building a six-unit T hangar. Uh, all our T hangars are fifty-some years old. We just painted them. We just spent the money to, uh, make them look a lot better, uh, so, um. So, uh, the six-unit thing's been on our five-year plan for at least the last ten, twelve years, so, um, but, um.
Anyway, we have to. Do we replace one, tear one down and put this up, or would it be an addition to?
Well, it could be either or. Um, I mean, we just painted them, so.
They're good, they're good for quite a while. They're, they're, there's a few leaks, but they've been fixed and the doors are, their doors are, are in constant need of repair, but they repair them and the tangers themselves are metal. They're not going anywhere. If you, if you preserve them with a little bit of paint, they'll last a long time, so.
You know, we always got constant maintenance on that type of stuff. They're sliding doors. They're not overhead doors. All the new tangers have bi-fold doors, you know? Uh, you can, I mean, the cost of that unit, a six-unit probably is, uh, seven, eight hundred thousand dollars. Um, we rent yours up in Claire. They got bi-fold doors. They're fairly new hangers, a hundred and fifty dollars a month, so. You know, we're, we're charging one forty for fifty-year-old hangers, so, um. But, uh, and we've had some, uh, turnover in the hangers, you know, as people get older. Don't wanna fly anymore. They sold their airplanes, so we have some hangers open up. We actually have a couple of open spots of hangers right now. So I, we do have one person that's, uh, pursuing buying an airplane, so they're gonna be renting a hangar if that goes through. Um, but that's part of what happens is people get older, lose their medical, can't fly, decide, do I sell my airplane? Do I not? Do we have a couple airplanes that, uh, people aren't flying, but they haven't decided to sell their airplane yet, so. Uh, but some of that will over time happen, so, um. So, yeah, so we're, uh, mowing season's wrapping, slowing down. We'll probably mow through about the first of October, depending on how much rain we get. We might not mow much. Um, we, um, we got the new lawnmower, county, uh, we ordered it in April and just got it here in August. So I think we got about twenty hours on that, so, um.
Working out quite well, isn't it?
Yeah.
It saves a lot of time because you gotta remember, the other ones had a discharge on the right-hand side. When you're going to mow, mow runways, you can't put the grass on the runway.
And so we said to throw the grass.
And then if the day, if the wind's blowing against you that day, it goes on regardless until you get it sprayed off. Now we have a rear, a rear discharge, no problem.
Yeah.
It saves a lot of time.
So anyway, um, um, George was talking about the, uh, uh, ten acres, uh, which is on the north end of runway, uh, eighteen three six, which is the north end of that runway. It's across Seaman Road. There's ten acres there that the county owns or the airport authority owns. We had trees in there that were too tall, violation of the federal, uh, approach. Uh, we were good with the state, but we were in violation of the federal ones. Um, so those trees got cut last fall, um, a year ago. Um, but now we got, um, trees coming, or brush coming back up. Uh, a year ago, we sprayed it all, what, what brush was coming. Uh, so, um, the buildings and grounds people, uh, uh, got a bid, uh, to, um, mulch that with a mulcher, go through and knock all the brush down, mulch it up. Um, so, um, we wanna move ahead with that particular project. Um, the problem with that brush is, is what do you do with it? Can you, you know, can you bring in a dozer and put on a, you know, um, um, a blade on it? You know, try to r- roll that stuff out, but you got all kinds of sod. So you either pile up a lot of sod and then you gotta go through and pull the brush back out. Do you spray it? Keep it sprayed? Um, the most successful operations in airports is to try to clear it as best you can, brush it or whatever. Um, turn it into grass. Just mow it, you know, two or three times a year and keep the, keep the work down so you don't have to cut trees every ten or fifteen years, so, um.
Well, we can work with Joe Butcher and Jack. Jack has a lot of the hay out there. He keeps track of. And I'm proposing, after we get this done, we can get with the butchers and they clean that up and they can put a hayfield in there.
Yeah, yeah. So the only option is, thing is, just to get that.
Yeah.
Mulcher, yeah.
If we get it, if we don't get it, it's just gonna keep getting worse.
So we need a motion.
Yeah.
To allow the airport to do this.
Yeah.
You wanna go?
We, which is the only bid you got, right? That's what you started off?
Only one we got. In like two or three months, we've been waiting.
This one actually is dated in April.
Yes. Yeah. To accept the bid from Cutting Edge Outdoor Solutions for a sum of four thousand five hundred dollars to mulch and clear the ten acres on the north side of the road.
I'll support that. Moved by Steve, supported by George, to allow the airport to hire, uh, essentially a mulcher to clear the ten acres on the north side for a total of forty-five hundred dollars. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, nay. Motion carried. Thank you, Dems.
Any, any other question you're? I don't know, let's go. Move.
Usually in the summertime, you have a, uh, have a program that you put on. Are you gonna do that this year or did you already do it?
Uh, our fly-in, you mean?
Yeah.
That was August twenty-third.
August what?
That's the August twenty-third.
I missed it.
Yeah, so the pictures in there were from that fly-in.
I missed the pictures, yeah.
Yeah, that was.
I was thinking it's something else out there where, okay, maybe that's what I'm thinking of. I know that you have, you just have something.
Well, different groups have s- different stuff. Like we have the Daffodil Fly-In, which is antique airplanes, but that's kind of a private thing. I mean, it's not usually open to the public. It's just open to the members of the antique flying people. There's some other little events that we have that aren't necessary, you know, community events and stuff.
That's, I saw in there, in there, it's kind of like for kids, but it seems like you had something for adults too, and I can't remember what it was.
That was the fly-in.
That was the fly-in.
Yeah, we fed like two, a hundred and ninety-five people. Last year, we fed, uh, fed around three hundred, but it rained that morning, so we, uh, so.
Yeah, the car club bring the cars up.
Yeah, there's pictures in there from the, the car group was there.
Well, some really old cars, which is kinda cool.
Yeah, yes.
I saw the picture.
No.
Yeah, the cars have been everywhere this year. I've seen them in St. Wilson and, um, Breckenridge.
Yeah.
Must be the same roof.
Probably, every same roof goes around, something to do, check off your car.
Hey, look at this one.
Go ahead, Tim. Consideration to go to, uh, from the airport meeting to the finance meeting. I'll support that.
Moved by, Tim, supported by George, to leave the airport meeting and go into the finance meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, now let's check. Okay, first thing we got is our cash balances. See how that looks. Everything is on track. Coming down to the wire here. Um, everything is in a normal situation. Doing okay. If you got any particular questions on that, it's basically, it just drops down as our, our budgets get spent out. And then we got check registers next. Give you a few minutes if there's any questions on the check register.
Got anybody that, uh, anything that stood out?
Different than I asked a bunch of questions to Ryan and Becky and then some.
Okay.
Got them all figured out?
Yeah, I, I just, I think that my, my comment about it is I think a better job can be done about how they enter some things. Um.
A little extra, a little more explanation?
Yeah, a little clearer explanation would have eliminated about half of the questions that I had. Just, um, some little things that, uh, you know, we, there's the one about pepper ball.
What are you considering?
You're looking. CMP pepper ball items. We didn't buy any pepper balls. We didn't buy anything to do with pepper ball, but pepper spray. There's a difference.
Yeah.
When you've lived in that world, it's, I was, you know, I was like, what, what on earth did we buy a pepper ball? I bought it all before I left, you know what I mean? Like those things last for decades.
Pepper ball, I would think.
When clarification, it was actually the pepper gel, which I know is extremely expensive for the corrections officers to carry. Made full sense once I got the further explanation, but it says pepper ball. It doesn't say pepper gel when it says.
Okay, that gives you something to do.
Yeah. Get my blood pressure up.
I don't know. I don't know what you got.
Um, that was, um, you know, I had a question and, and I spoke with Ryan briefly about it as well. But, uh, one of the things that we paid, uh, fifteen hundred and seven dollars for, for BSNA timesheets, annual service and support.
Mm-hmm.
Um, my question is, are we utilizing BSNA?
Today.
We, we, I'm talking about time cards. Uh, we use it, but is it being used as BSNA should be being used for time cards? Um, the way this program is, I think, intended when I wasn't around when it was first purchased, but it's supposed to totally automate your, uh, time card system. And we still have people writing paper time cards, and those time cards then are being entered by somebody else when I think that the, the essence of this system is that you don't have to do that and it's all entered by the employee. So.
So what would be the fold-up of why people aren't using it?
It goes back to training.
Training, yeah.
Yeah, that's an issue we've discussed, whether it's counting for payables or use of time sheets, software that doesn't do you any good if you're working for it, it's not working for you. There is, there is a need for additional training.
To go back in time, I hate to go back in time, but when I started here, two thousand and fourteen, I'm like, man, I don't remember, it was like two thousand and fourteen. Eighty to ninety percent of all the payroll checks were written. Written. I about had a fit. What the hell are you people doing? Well, it took a while, but guess what? How many checks are written now for payroll?
Zero.
Right? It takes time. And I'm glad you found that because I, I didn't know that. But what you do, and what we can decide to do with the direction of our administrator and finance people, how long is it gonna take to train those people? To put.
Like the chief.
On January one of twenty twenty-six. Then if the six have us in the cart, they don't give pay. There you go. It's very simple.
There's lots and lots of places to use it.
I hope, I train people very simply. I give you plenty of time. I give you plenty of tools, but there is a time where you don't do it anymore. And so that's something we can talk about, you know? Just get it done. We don't ACHs anymore. I don't, I don't know how many we have to do, but I mean, my God. You know, this check register, ninety-nine percent ACHs, it's not a paper check, well.
Another question I had, and Ryan, you, I believe when you were at Clinton County, the sheriff's department has a contract with a tow company to do all their towing, correct?
I believe that's the case, yes. I mean, based on different jurisdictions in the county.
Yeah, where you're at, like, yeah, if you're closer to the south end, all that kind of stuff.
Prefer list, yeah.
Yeah. I just, I don't know, Tom, have you ever looked into like getting like if it's north of Washington Road, we go with one, if it's South Washington Road? I know we have that agreement for towing cars, but I'm talking about evidentiary cars, our own cars. It's a set fee. When I was at another county south of here, you knew who was gonna tow every single time. If one of our cars broke down, it wasn't a question who was towing our cars. If we had a car that had to come in for evidence, it wasn't a question. If one of our cars broke down, it wasn't a question who was towing our cars. If we had a car that had to come in for evidence, it wasn't a question. Who was towing it? You knew who was towing it and who you had to request, and there was just a set fee. So it wasn't a. They might tow one three blocks and we paid this much, and they might tow one this corner and we paid that same amount. And I just think it would simplify what, you know, we get these bills. You had one towed for evidence is the one I remember. That brought this to my attention, which is total normal, everyday police work. But it would, I think it's something worth looking into if one of these companies or both would give you a contract price. This is a flat fee. We pay it every single time we have a car towed. I just, I think it simplifies life for you, your officers and the tow company. It's just a boom. It's two hundred bucks or a hundred and fifty bucks or whatever that fee is, that's what it is. Doesn't matter. They gotta call somebody in or what? That's just how it works. Um, I, I just think it's worth looking at. Now I'll shut up.
You have any questions? Any, got any questions?
No, I don't.
Hey, we'll move on. Uh, Tim, you got anything? Sorry. And David speak up at me if I move my hand. Next expenditure report. Anybody anything in there that you might want to think about? But it's usually. Oh, basically the same thing over and over and over again every month, pay the same bills. As long as they pay the power bill, right?
Yep.
Well, we don't have any questions on that. You got something?
Bill, we're, that time is on the distribution report.
All right, treasurer.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, first of all, we have the August twenty twenty-five investment report. That's still holding in pretty well.
So that happens after tomorrow.
Yep.
It's a big day.
It'll go down a little bit, but by the end of the year, we're gonna see a significant problem with our interest rates.
Well. There's not much we can do about that, though.
But you've got to be prepared for it.
I know, I understand that. Next is the, uh, transfer report. Eight of them, didn't have much, many transfers this month, and then the receipt distribution report. You said you had a question?
Cause I sent you an email about.
Oh, yeah, I talked.
Yep, and that's.
Ryan about that.
I was supposed to bring it up.
Okay.
Was I, I, we, I mean, we learned at the conference, I'm having a mental block.
Sure.
Called you because Steve sent us both an email and asked you if you wanted me to answer it, if you were gonna answer it, and you said you would take care of it.
Real property and the personal property, those two line items, we talked briefly about.
Um, and then.
Come from, what it's used, those.
It's okay. It's, um, those two line items are, um, county operating for the real property and for the personal property. Those.
What comes in from each, every township where we, everybody makes the tax payments.
That is correct.
And that's the amount of money that comes in to us.
Yes.
Okay. And then that money goes into our general fund, correct?
Yes, it goes into those line items that you asked about. Yes, yes.
Okay. The Fund Two Forty-nine and Fund Five Forty-two, which are building inspection and soil erosion inspection.
Yes.
Can you explain what those are? Cause I know some of that money is, comes from other sources that I don't think everybody knows where they all come from. Because we do building inspections for the city of Alma.
Yeah, we do.
So it's things that come in out of Alma, not just the county.
Right.
And, um, so the, the dollar figure looks different than the permits. Cause it's, you know, the, the money gets paid to the city of Alma, correct? And then the money from that comes to us.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so there's like.
I, I do have some.
Some of those things are off.
Uh-huh. And the city of, uh, oh, and now I believe the city of St. Louis is.
I believe St. Louis also. So some of those things are a little bit different, and that's why I think we need to understand as a board. When we see these numbers, some of them don't always look exactly like we think it's gonna.
Mm-hmm, and the addressing that goes into the, the two four nine as well.
That's why I, I just wanted, I, I really think that, um. I talked to, to Ryan, we had a nice long conversation about, um, just things with understanding this budget. And understanding things that go on in treasures office, okay? I really truly believe a little further explanation on how some of this stuff works would help everybody sitting up here understand. How this all works. So I don't need, I don't need a book, you know what I mean? I don't need a new, you know what I mean? But I just think a description so that people understand some of this stuff would go light years for helping, um, you know. Each one of us understand how this tax money stuff works.
Sure.
You know what I mean? We are, we sit up here and approve it all going, you know, that we're spending the deck of cards, right? But I know there's people who don't truly understand, and I'm not saying that I understand all of it.
Okay.
Called and talked to you, I've called and talked to Ryan.
Hmm.
You know what I mean? I, I, I just, I really think the board needs to have a better understanding of. How some of these things happen and what, why they happen and, and what it happens for.
Sure.
Okay, that's, that's why I asked that is, is just like, this is one that, you know, we, we, we just approved fees. For building permits, so it's like, we'll just keep the trend for this month. That's the one that we would talk about to get some, you know, explanation on that stuff, so.
When, um, when people get permits or, or any of that, they go to the permits office. The only thing I see is when the permits office brings up their deposit to me. And then it gets distributed into these line items that you see on this distribution report.
And most of those fees that are, go to the permits department. That's how they're paid.
Yeah.
They're not paid generally by the.
There, there are special funds.
There are some rules.
And they create their own funds within that special fund.
Yes.
So that's what you look at, um.
Two four nine and five four two are both that kind of fund where they have to, they have to create their own revenue so that they can pay their own expenditures. And it all is, you know, that, it can't go for anything else.
But I think that's beneficial for everybody sitting here to stand and know that. That's, that's where I'm getting from.
Hang out down there, I know.
I would suggest that if board really wants to have a better company, it's gonna be broken down in chunks. Perhaps you have a special meeting at some time, you don't have to make any decisions, but you can go through and you. Your administrator and your finance fiduciary, and they can explain how these.
Yeah, that's one of the things that Ryan and I talked about was that we, we need to have a, a meeting where you. Okay, so we get the. Yes, probably multiple, but the budget. And, and Ryan will tell you, he inherited a. Mass and he's inherited a mass and he's trying to get it, you know, him and Marion have worked very diligently to get this thing. Somewhat, so we had a, a clearer consensus or more consent. I mean, you go back in time and I'd asked Jan for this and Jan gave me, cause I, she's always talking about how the books used to be.
I remember.
So I asked for one and Jan, hell, she drove it to my house. Bless your heart, she found where I live out in the middle of nowhere. But anyhow, you know, and I talked with Ryan about this, cause I think.
Those are no secret, right?
No, no, these are no secrets. You know what I mean? This is, this is all public information, so. You know, when I, I talked with Ryan about, there's explanations in here about all those things. Like he said, when he proposed the budget in Clinton, correct? There was like a, a brief description of what you were, what this segment of the book, budget was about. And I just think it would be very beneficial for board members if you, when you. It's similar to reading this book that the county bought. It's about how county government runs. And when you open it up to budget.
Yeah.
The financial part of, I mean, it's very descriptive of what our budget should kind of look like. It helped me understand the budget process. It helped me understand the budget a lot, but these are, I'm just gonna use, I opened it. General operating nine forty-one fund, you know, contingency activity accounts for, uh. Unanticipated expenses and unforeseen emergency expenses that may occur during a fiscal year. The Board of Commissioners must approve any use of these funds. Very, you know what I mean? I don't need it even in this to keep this cleaner. But it should sure be nice to have all of those funds listed in a, like a booklet then. You're not gonna be here to do those things, Ryan. You know, we and I discussed that. You're here for this brief time. I just really think when we get the new administrator, it would certainly be nice.
Probably used to do.
Have some of those things so that we can understand what each one of those funds is. Because when you read about it, it's, uh, it's very.
Mary, by the way, you did an excellent job, I thought, on this budget.
She's not, oh, there she is. She's.
I've been complaining about the budget for a long time because. It's, you gave a lot of, you gave a lot, yeah, first time here, so thank you.
It needs to move forward.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mary, Ken, and I both agree. We talked with Dave last week. I explained my position and Mary convinced her to say this similar thing without any prompting that. Things were askilled, the chart of accounts in the last year's budget even changed and it's been reflected. There were things misplaced in budgets for expenditures and where they were expensed and. Fourteen funds were closed and getting reorganized. In that short of a period, there was not time to add the narrative and, you know, tell a, tell a bit of a story. I mean, there's a fine line between having a budget that people can look through and understand and get a grasp. And then other places, you know, they grant awards and these financial organizations for. There's a point where they become art and crafts projects. I don't think you need to go there, but you need to have. A more robust budget with a bit of narrative on it, bonds.
Absolutely.
Would be a report about the sheriff, maybe to know for tickets, officer status, you know. So anybody from the public walks in is curious about how the county operates and how many people are there, what the different departments are doing. That would be there, yeah, that's very common. It should be there. Just then moves along because it should, if the property running.
Yeah. Because you look at last, this is our number two. We don't have any on this year either, you know what I mean? So you, you can look back at last year's budget and go, oh, this was helpful to understand what that one was. Yeah, so that's, that's why I bring this up, you know, and this is the time to, we're talking about the budget, so. I just really think that, um. Granger County as a whole will be better if we have those kind of things. So the five commissioners who are making, all of them ultimately, those are, that's one of our big things that we do. I mean, we hire and fire a administrator, we set policy and we approve a balanced budget. Well, it's hard to grasp and approve budget that you don't truly understand. All the ins and outs. It shouldn't be hours on the phone, you know, and I've spent a fair amount of time talking, right? Sometimes I talk to him after hours when I know he's driving because then he can stay awake as he drives home. You know what I mean? Cause I'll rattle his chain while on his way home. But I just, I really think that there are some things that as we get this new administrator on board. They're gonna have to start working on this like right away, because I mean, we're.
They don't have a much better starting point.
Yes, I agree.
Marion.
I agree.
Diligently, tirelessly, that she was a major player in all of this.
Yes.
This is a good foundational budget.
Yes.
If someone comes in and says this is all screwed up, you're in trouble. It, it does need to be improved.
Yeah.
No question about that. I mean, I'm first one to say that, that it could be much better and it. So, and it's hard to do it in one fell swoop, but as you become familiar with the organization, the department has to get better at what they're doing.
Yep.
They submit better information. The capital plan needs a lot of work, it just runs refinement and explanations.
Most departments weren't even included in the budget process.
No.
And that's.
That's a problem.
It was kind of a, but it's been started now. You have a foundational budget, a lot of stuff's been cleaned up. It'll be much easier to move forward.
Well, I, I think trust is a big part of this too. We hired you knowing you had a lot of experience at our next door neighbor, okay? That was a trust, that was a leap of trust. We just had gotten punched in the gut by someone that I believe everybody in this room thought they trusted.
Yes.
And so, you know, it was a leap of faith to put trust in you and. Bring it all to Mary Ann to do this stuff. So, I mean, that's where I'm like, I, I truly believe we, as the five commissioners. Need more information on some of these things than just. Saying yay or, you know, Angie's going through doing a roll call vote and yes or no. Certainly would be more beneficial, especially me. I try to read this stuff and reread this stuff to try and make sure that I've divulged it. I, I try to call, send emails, that's what we're supposed to do, to make sure that we understand this stuff to our fullest. You know what I mean? Ability and I'm no accountant. So I worked with budgets when I was the undersheriff, very little, more or less than I thought I was going to. But I worked with them in my previous employment as well, where, you know, when I was in charge of different divisions and things. I at least got to see my line items and know what money I had to spend and how I was doing as we went through the, you know, you got your quarterly reports. So you knew where you were at.
Track your budget.
You could track, you know, oh, we're getting towards, we're in the fourth quarter and we need new TVs for the training department. You know, I got three grand, I can spend up to three thousand more and, and get that done, and I'm not going over budget or whatever. I just think that for us to understand that stuff better would be, um, very beneficial, not only to us, the five commissioners. But to our administrator, to our new chief financial officer, and, um, to me, to our taxpayers. That's who, you know, the people who voted for me in my district, that's who I work for day in and day out. And that's what I want to make sure that I'm doing the best due diligence I can and understanding this stuff to the best of my ability. To, to get that done, because trust is one of those things. I might, somebody sent me a quote today. Trust is like the air we breathe. When it's present, nobody really notices, but when it's absent, everybody notices. Think about that. You've ever been somewhere where you can't breathe? It's not a lot of fun. So, um, that's a quote from Warren Buffett. I don't know what anybody thinks about him or don't really care, but that is a great quote about trust. In that this county, really with what we just went through, we are, anybody who thinks we're, is out of their mind. Cause go and talk to. You folks, the people who work in this building and talk to the, your constituents that are the people paying their taxes and, you know what I mean? We have to work on rebuilding that trust, and I think you've made a hell of a step forward with this budget being, you know, you got rid of stuff that was. Not necessary, but it's still a work in progress. It's something that needs to be done, and that's, that's where I. I just really think that we as a county need to work hard on that issue.
I am grateful for your calls or emails because that gives me the opportunity to find the answers. Because if you're standing here, I'm not gonna have what you wanna know probably with me. I can give you an informed answer if I know what your question is gonna be.
That's, that's all I wanted to say about that is I just thank you for what you did. Um, thank you for your, your conversations as I.
Yes, and Victor.
Yeah, no, thank you. She, she was on, there was more than once that it was a group call. He'd be like, hang on, and she would come down there. So thank you for, for that. I just, I really think we need to, you know, work on, as we move forward with. You working on hiring this new person, we work on getting a new administrator. This is a huge thing for us.
And the only thing I, I just thank, thank you for all of the, the kind words and the encouragement for everyone here, but. Department has, you know, the training that they all have a major role in this as well. It's not just the administration. Every department had their lead, county people and everybody in that department that. And I think, you know, with that type of support and enthusiasm, that curiosity is that. You gotta get better. That's all there is to it. All damn group does. Everybody involved, so, yes, thank you.
Well, and I do look for the budget to improve because of the groundwork that's been laid in a very short time.
Any questions?
I were done with you.
Well.
Thank you, Terry.
Right, and if anybody does have any questions, I'm always available. So, call me, stop by, I'd be glad to explain.
Yes, I hijacked your area and I was supposed to say all that mostly under board comments, but I got on a roll, so. I hijacked your area, and I was supposed to say all that mostly under board comments, but I got on a roll, so everybody in this room that knows me knows I like to talk.
Okay. Oh, thank you.
Yep.
Hey, Tim, do your thing.
Um, I moved that we moved from the financial meeting to the general meeting.
The purpose of paying the bills.
Uh, what's the pur- purpose of paying the bills?
There you go, it's very simple, she'll write it right, but that's what we intend to do. Pay the bills.
Moved by Tim, supported by George, to leave the finance meeting and go into the general meeting, the purpose of paying the bills. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or nay?
Okay, so we've done that, I motion to adjourn.
Do you have one more public comment?
I have another, well, they're leaving.
Guess we don't. Again, he should offer it.
Yeah, we should, I'm sorry, anybody have any further comments?
Yeah, it's just laced with public comment.
Well, tonight is special, with all our special meetings.
All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.